In La Town Hall and Christian County. I am a Pritchett Committee member and a former student voice member for the Pritchett Committee. And today I am joined with three students from the Christian County Public Schools. Ms. Buckner from Christian County High School, Ms. Christian Berry from Christian County High School, and Ms. Trice Wilford from Christian County High School. Tonight, we're going to gain insights from the candidates running for the Christian County School Board in this year's election. While so much attention has been placed on the nationwide elections, it's important for us to understand the local election shape policies on our impact and impact our daily lives, and making some ways a more significant and even a more significant impact than a presidential one. So while we have everyone gathered today, it is important for us to remember that November 3rd is Election Day. So alongside other student researchers and adult allies, the Pritchett Committee Student Voice Team, our largest and latest approach to mobilizing students as partners in education research with coping with coping with COVID-19 student to student survey, we have launched in May in the wake of a statewide school closure. The study fielded responses from 9,400 students across from Kentucky, ranging from all 120 counties. Over the past several months, student researchers have worked diligently alongside other adults to understand the data and realize what are the problems are in Kentucky's education. We've already shared our findings with Kentucky Board of Education, and that you can find that on the Pritchett Committee's Facebook page. For tonight's town hall, we have reached out to all the candidates here in Christian County up for election and reelection. And tonight, we are joined by District One candidate Ms. Tiffany Muffet Brain, District Two candidate Mr. John Bruce, District Two candidate Mr. Jeff Moore, and I believe Mr. District Four candidate Mr. Walker is on the line. And after this opening question, I will hand the floor over to our three students representing us tonight to ask the following questions, who will moderate our conversation for today. So if all the candidates can open up with this first statement and respond to this. What were you like as a high school student? And to what extent do you think that experience will inform your work as a member of the school board? And what do you think qualifies you for this position? And we'll start with Ms. Muffet Brain. Thank you.
First, I just wanted to say I'm actually District Two. But it's okay. Just wanted to put that out there in case anybody was just confused a little bit. It's okay. It's fine. As a student, a high school student, I felt like I was a little shy. I cheered in high school. I was on the dance team. I didn't really feel like I fit in, although I've been told that I was kind of popular. But I think the experiences that I had in high school would help me be a good and positive school board member because I can relate with the kids that aren't so popular. I can relate with the kids that are kind of popular. I'm not from a rich background, so my parents kind of struggled, you know, with me growing up, trying to financially support me in sports and athletics, and trying to make sure that I had all the necessary tools I needed for my education and to succeed in school. So I think that, you know, the way I grew up would help me be a great role model and a positive school board member.
Thank you. Mr. Moore? You're muted, Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, I think, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, dude. And I'm not very tech savvy. We can get that out of the way right now, okay? Just an average student, played sports, wrestled as a freshman and sophomore. I weighed 98 pounds. As a junior and senior, I weighed 105. Played tennis, had an opportunity to go play tennis after high school and chose not to because I love farming, and that's what I'm still doing to this day. Just a very average, average high school student with really, really good friends that I still talk to on a daily basis. There's still, there's four of us that talk or text every day. As far as what could I do to help with the, on the school board, I don't know exactly. I know that I'm a good listener. I will share concerns that I get with at every meeting. I ask some hard questions, trying to make sure that we've got the best atmosphere for our kids and for our teachers. And I try to hold everybody accountable for what they're supposed to be doing. As far as from Mr. Benzel on down, I really want to make sure everybody's doing their job and doing it properly for the best so that it'll be the best for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bruce?
Well, I come from some pretty humble background, as you do, Ms. Brain. My dad was a sharecropper farmer, and during my high school years, we actually moved to town. It was an upgraded in life position when he became the custodian of one of the schools in our school system. My mother ran the cafeteria. So that come from a very blue collar background. But the other side of high school for me was, that was a chance to really, I wanted to go to college. And I would be the first in my immediate family to go to college, and only the second in my extended family to go to college. Well, in order to do that, I had to find a way to do it funding wise. I chose to chase the Air Force. They came along and offered me an opportunity. If you do well enough in high school, you can go. So between the sports, the fact that I worked while I was in school, and then adding on to that, I did well in school. I graduated second in my class. I played baseball. I ran cross country and played football. So the sports activity was there as well as working. And then, like I said, later on, the opportunity to fly was a gift because I meet all kinds of people that wanted to fly since they were, you know, three years old. That wasn't me. I wanted to go to college, and I needed a way to pay for it, and the Air Force offered to do that. So that was my choice of life. Once I was flying, I stayed. I spent 22 years in the Air Force, so I stayed a long time. But that experience through high school, well, how does that make me a better board member? I think it's because I wanted to succeed. I've been driven all my life for success. And the opportunity to convey or construct policies that allow people to do that, I want everybody to have the opportunities that I did. You have to chase it. You have to work hard. But if you do, you get rewarded. And that's where I want to try to focus. The policies of the board to allow folks to be all that they can. I don't want to borrow from the Army phrase, but be all that you can be. And education is the opportunity because it offers you options. If you're educated and you want to be a ditch digger, that's okay. Be the most educated ditch digger out here. Then it's your option to be a ditch digger, and that's okay. And that's your choices in life. Education offers you choices, and that's a flavor for my whole life.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Alrighty. At this time, Ms. Buckner, you can start.
All right. So a highly contested issue over the past month has been reopening schools in the midst of a growing number of cases during this pandemic. For this question, we will start with Mr. Bruce. Based on the concerns and challenges that both students and educators have voiced about remote learning, including the ones outlined in our coping with COVID-19 study, and the potential risk, the potential health risk of going back to.
I lost her audio.
Yes.
You're muted by mistake. Could you unmute?
How long was I muted, the whole thing? I'll just start over.
Thank you.
A highly contested issue over the past month has been reopening schools in the midst of a growing number of cases during this pandemic. For this question, we will start with Mr. Bruce. Based on the concerns and challenges that both students and educators have voiced about remote learning, including the ones outlined in our coping with COVID-19 study, and the potential health risk of going back to reopen, to your, going back to school in person. What is your ideal reopening plan given CDC COVID-19 guidelines? You'll have around one minute to respond, starting with Mr. Bruce. And then we'll open up to other candidates.
Okay. Interesting question because this is talking about risk. Risk is something that's going to be present throughout your life. How much risk you take is what you're trying to control. I applaud the staff for putting together the dashboard that shows school by school, which is a better measure, I feel, than it is to conclude the whole county. If a school has a problem, then that school is the one you need to focus on. If that school's not having an issue, then you can go back to school. I read an article just today, which talked about the number of suicides in Kentucky, as well as the opioids, and I know that those things pick up at this time of year anyway because we start going indoors. But it's a problem. It'll become a crisis. So the cure, as in if we isolate everyone, separate everyone, can't be worse than the problem we already have. But you also need to really work on the virtual learning. I think virtual learning is something that's with, is here to stay. Not for everyone, and probably not to the degree that we're using it now. But I can envision that people, maybe only 500, 600, 700 students next year, would want to be a virtual learner. So we really have to work on making it as seamless as it was proposed. So when you are joining or leaving the classroom, your learning goes on through the virtual academy. But the socialization, there are a lot of things, a lot of reasons to go to school beyond just education. Some of that has to do with social aspects as well. That's got to be close to a minute, I think. I'll stop.
All right. Thank you. The next candidate can go, whichever one would like to go.
I'll start. I think as a single mom, I actually sent my kids back to school. That was just something that I felt personally that I wanted for my kids because I'm a working mom. But as a school board member, I feel that it is important for me to not just think of me and my household, but to think of every parent and kid in Christian County. I've heard a lot of people that don't want their kids to go back. I've heard some that want them to go back. But I think we need to take a consensus of every student and every parent in Christian County to see what it is that they really want. Because the last thing we need is to force them to do something that they're not ready for. But we don't want to also have an outbreak in cases. But I want to say that I feel like, you know, Mr. Benzel and educators and administrators in Christian County have been doing a wonderful job so far. I've heard a lot of good things. I think that a lot of the kids had some concerns with virtual, and, you know, we weren't necessarily prepared for it just because it was something new. But I think the more that we work on it and the more that we gain education about virtual learning, that it could be something that would potentially help our students in the future to succeed. I just think that the kids need a little more progression as far as, you know, being prepared for it. But I will say that I really feel like it should be up to the parents and the students and the educators on whether or not the kids go back to school or not.
All right, Mr. Moore?
Okay. You know, Mr. Benzel made us a promise that if we went back to school, that our kids would be taken care of as best that we possibly could. And I think that he's proved that time and time again. I think there's a lot of students that do virtual that maybe aren't self motivated enough to be in virtual academy. And that's what worries me is that, are we going to look back 10 years from now and realize the ones that we let slip through the cracks? I'm not a, I think the kids that are less self motivated need to be back in personal school, be in the school system with the teachers there. I know I've talked to a couple of parents that said that they had honor students. They were going into the ninth grade, but being able to only be there two days a week, they were struggling with their schoolwork. And I think that there's so many kids that need that attention that's based right there, face to face. And I feel like there's no better time to close the gap between our top students and our lower students than right now, when it's, there's a better teacher to student ratio actually in our school systems. And I think that that's the greatest thing that can happen now, as long as we're keeping them safe. And Ms. Kidd does a great job keeping us informed. She does a great job keeping the, you know, talking with the health department. I'm extremely excited about what all we've done as a group. I will say this, I talked to a teacher before we went back and voted on this. And out of her 26 students, 14 of them had never logged on. So that right there told me that we needed to be back in school. That way, we know we're educating everyone. And that's exactly what Christian County Public School System is about, is about education. It's protecting them with the best we can, health-wise and however else. But we're here to educate. We are educators. That's what we're doing. And so I stand behind everything that our administration has done, and I'm extremely proud of everything that they've done. Thank you.
I can say personally, I feel like our Christian County Public School system has handled the reopening very well. And as a senior, I can say that they've tried to make it special for us and all the other students that attend in the district despite the circumstances. And they're trying to make a healthier school for us, and they're doing everything that they can. And they're doing various ways and activities to make sure that we understand the content that we're getting taught.
Amen.
Thank you all for sharing your viewpoints. For this next question, we will start with Ms. Muffet Brain. A fellow CCPS student asks, would you support closing CCPS if community spread becomes more of a problem? You'll have one minute to respond.
Yes, I would. Like I said, being that I am a parent myself and I work, I worry about my kids every day. I worry about myself when I go to work. But like I said, even though I'm comfortable with my kids going to school, there are so many parents that are not comfortable with their kids going back to school. And we ultimately want what's best for the students and our teachers. That's the ultimate goal. That's what everybody's goals should be. But if the cases do get higher, I do feel like we should take a break, you know, reevaluate things, see how the numbers look, and then return back. But like I said, I trust Mr. Benzel and his decisions that he's been making. I trust the board members and decisions that they're being making. But I also hear from a lot of parents in the community, and I know that parents are scared. I know that parents want their kids to succeed in their education, but they're worried. You know, this is something that we should not play around with. This is something that are taking people's lives on a daily basis. It's a serious matter. It's something that shouldn't be taken lightly. But like I said, it's really up to the parents because they are the ones that are protecting these kids. And they should feel comfortable with their kids going to school. And if the numbers do go up, I do feel like we should, you know, take time off from school and reevaluate things afterwards.
All right. Thank you for responding. I'll now open up the question to the other candidates.
Do you want to just call one of us out, either Mr. Bruce or Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore.
Okay. You know, that does scare me with this surge that's going on right now. You know, as far as being in school, the things that we've done and put in place, it's been a sporting event that has set us back at each and every time. Last year's seniors had a really difficult time whenever we just walked away from school. You know, they didn't get a prom. They didn't get to graduate in, you know, they didn't have all their classmates there to graduate. I think we need to be very aware of what's going on around us. And we need to see where the hotspots are, and if it's something to do with an extracurricular activity, we need to be careful with what we do there. We may have to shut some of that down. We need our kids in school safely. Now, if it outbreaks and it's something that we can't control in our school system, I'm all for going virtual. And we're set up for that now. We've got a plan in place for that day if it does happen. But my prayer is that we are able to maintain, and we can keep our kids in school, just like you being a senior. This is your senior year. This has got to be the best time of your life up until now. And we want to make sure that we keep y'all safe, that we keep you educated, and we keep you moving forward, preparing you to be a model citizen going forward from Christian County Public School Systems. So if it comes down to it, I'm all for shutting down for a while and looking at it. But in all honesty, I really, really, really want y'all in school because I think that's where you learn best. Plus, that's where you get to see your friends, you get to, you get to spread your wings. And that's what this is all about, when you get, especially to be in a senior. So thank you.
All right. Mr. Bruce? You're muted.
There we go. This is where the dashboard really starts to make an impact because you can take a look at where the problem is. Your question was about community spread. At what point does a community spread impact the school system? Well, we're not living in a bubble. You know, you go to school. You can do things safely at school. The impact that you can have on the students while they're there helps them, okay? I think it's a great that we're teaching everybody to wash their hands. I wasn't aware that we had that big a problem with it, but evidently we do. So we're learning to wash our hands. Those are little things that'll help them through their entire life. That stuff, you have to be there to teach them to do it. But the virtual allows you to then transition back and forth, especially if the dashboard shows we have a problem in one place as opposed to the other. Once the community reaches some point, we may lose control over that idea. But if you can give data to decisions, it will help. And that's one of the things that you can, you can look at, what's the spread rate? How many people, how many cases? And then you can make good, informed decisions based on the data. Then you can have other things that impact. Those are the emotional parts. Those are the things about being a senior in school. Those are the things about being, interacting with your friends. And then how long do you have to restrict it? We're learning more and more about this virus than we had six months ago. We know a lot more about what to do and what not to do, or how to treat it. I kind of watch and monitor the hospitalization rates and the death rates and see how much, based on the cases go up, but is the percentage staying low or lower? That's data-driven decisions.
All right. Thank you all for sharing. We greatly appreciate your insight. As we begin this school year online, teachers have had a great deal of responsibilities to take on. From navigating an online platform to finding new means of communication with students and their families. This transition was difficult and likely still is difficult. A high school student asks, do you think there was a way we could have a better? Let me restart the question. A high school student asks, do you think there was a way we could have better prepared for this school year? You'll have around one minute to respond. We'll start with Mr. Bruce.
I'm going to ask you to repeat that question. I'm not sure I follow along with it.
Do you, do you think there was a way we could have better prepared for this school year?
Well, the answer to that's going to be a generic, always yes. Are there things you can look back now and say, oh, we should have done that better? Absolutely. Given the information you have at the time, you make the best decisions you can. I'm going to trust that folks had the best interest of the students in Christian County as they were making decisions of how to do this, how to go to school, how to do virtual learning academy. As they put the things together, they're making decisions based on the information available at the time. Today, look back, how did we do? Well, you know, you have the first nine weeks of the virtual learning. How did we do? Were we able to get every lesson to every student, non-traditional instruction? Did every lesson get to every student? If not, why not? Are there things you can fix? Those are things you do going forward. So it's a constant learning experience. You're dealing with 8,000-plus students here. Trying to make the first answer correct for everything will be all virtually impossible. But you try to learn from it so that the second nine weeks is better than the first nine weeks, and the third nine weeks is better than the second nine weeks. Learning, and that's something, that's a lesson for life. It goes on forever. It doesn't change. You try to fix the things you broke, and then if it's not broke, then you keep on doing that because it works for you. Hope that answers the question you're asking.
Yes. Ms. Tiffany Muffet Brain?
One thing that I have always learned is that the good Lord will always throw curveballs at you. I don't think anyone was necessarily prepared for the way that 2020 has been going on so far. As a parent, I was definitely, I felt unprepared for the virtual learning when it first started out because it was something new to me. I'm a young parent. I think I'm a little tech savvy myself. But, you know, trying to raise three kids and trying to go to school and working, I was a little overwhelmed. I will admit, my kids have struggled a little bit, a little communication here and there with different teachers. But I believe that every time I had an issue with anything, the teachers reached out to me and they, you know, helped the situation. But I will say that the teachers and the school board and administrators have done a wonderful job trying to communicate. It's been hard. It was new for everybody. It was something that everybody had to come together and learn, and every day we're learning something new. But I will say that I feel like they have, you know, did the best that they could with what they had. There's always room for improvement. But I will say, when they do reach out and ask for surveys, please, parents, please respond back. You can't complain about something if you don't give your feedback. They don't know if you're having issues if you don't tell people. But I will say, the community feedback is going to be a big part of moving forward because the educators and the central office have to know what's going on, and they have to know if you're having issues. They need to know if it's working or what's not working in order to make it better for parents and students. So just be more mindful of trying to communicate with the teachers. And when they send out surveys, please respond back because it is essential in helping us move forward in the process.
So I have a question for you. So you feel as though community surveys help get a better understanding to, of what, of what the parents of students feel, wait, how should I say it? You've, so you feel as though surveys given by the school district are vital in order to have a great communication with the parents of the students of the school district?
I mean, I graduated in 2007. I don't ever remember there being surveys sent out. If there was, I don't remember. But I will say, you're not going to find a lot of counties that are going to ask parents what it is that they want, what it is that they think should be happening. And if they're giving us an opportunity to give us their feedback, we need to do that because they can just make their own decisions, and then people will be mad about what decision they come up with. But if they're giving you the opportunity to tell them what it is we need and what it is we want, then we have to give the feedback back. We can't sit back and complain about something if you're not going to, you know, express your feelings and your thoughts about what's working and what's not working. So yes, I really do feel like it's an essential part in making our community and our school system better.
All right. Mr. Moore?
Yes, ma'am. You know, I think you look at this school year, and we're dealing with something we've never dealt with before. We've got a first-year superintendent. So think about that for a minute. Everything he's doing is under, is, I mean, he's got a microscope on him. We put together three different plans to return to school, okay? Three. And they worked diligently on all three of them. You know, hindsight's 2020. There's going to always be things that we might could have done differently. We might could have done. You know, hindsight's 2020. There's going to always be things that we might could have done differently. We might could have done better. And with me being the only incumbent running again, you know, they, they can point to me as being one of the, the reasons that something maybe fell through the cracks. And you know what? We've tried to do everything we possibly could to make this as seamless as possible getting back to school. You know, I, I filled the phone calls from parents that, you know, we got two days left till the deadline. And I said, well, have you tried before today to get in? Well, no, we haven't. I'm like, well, this has been, it's, it's been on the news. It's been in the paper. They send out, Mr. Rittenhouse sends out stuff to you with those surveys that you were just talking about. It's not something that just popped up forty-eight hours ago. This is something that we've been trying to figure out because we want input. And that's one thing that this board has asked for, is input from the, from, from families, from parents, from guardians, from grandparents. We basically have zero of those people at our school board meetings. And I've asked and asked and asked for the community involvement so that we know what we want. Look here, this is a community-wide position. This is a community-wide public school system. We need the input, just as Ms. Muffet was just saying. Those surveys go a long ways towards what we need to do. But I will give the staff credit and Mr. Benzel's, the people that he's put in place, credit. They had three plans put in place and all three of them were really, really, really good. I think this has been about as easy a transition getting back into the school as we could have had for a first-year superintendent. And then COVID-19, who would have wanted, who would have wanted his job going into this? And he's done an excellent job, as I think my fellow board members have with what we put in place. So, I just, you know, it's tough and we can always look back and say, oh, that Mr. Moore did some bad stuff because he was on that board. Dude, we've tried to do everything we possibly could for the kids and for the teachers. And it's all of them as a whole. It's not just one of your friends or one of your friend spouses as a teacher. It's what's best for the school system and each and every kid in it.
Thank you all for sharing.
Good evening. My name is Tiff Tye. And we're going to now transition to budget allocation plans. So, this pandemic has undoubtedly impacted the budget. However, varying opinions and concerns have always been deep-riddled in the allocation of funds. So, for this question, each candidate will have the opportunity to respond. The question is, what are your main priorities in terms of infrastructure, personnel, and resources? And how would they be integrated in the Christian County budget? So, we'll start with Ms. Muffet Brain and then Mr. Moore. And then finally, Mr. Bruce.
Okay, so can you repeat it? You're, you're kind of breaking up just a little.
So, Ms. Muffet, if you have a start.
Okay, Donovan just sent me the, the question, so.
In the chat.
Okay, so I think.
I'm sorry. Mr. Parents sent the question in the chat. Yeah.
Yeah. So, what are my main priorities in terms of infrastructure, personnel, and resources? And how would they be integrated into the Christian County budget? My main priorities of infrastructure and personnel resources. First, I really feel like we have to support our teachers. They are the ones that, you know, really hold us together. The teachers, as far as I can remember in Christian County, have been some of the best, the most dedicated, the most resourceful. I mean, I've seen teachers come out of their own pockets to, you know, buy kids things that they need, whether it be household goods or there'd be school supplies. They really take care of their kids and they really put their heart into everything that they do. And that's just not from what I've seen from my own kids' teachers. But as a student, I, I firsthand witnessed teachers every day that just went out of their way to make sure that their kids were successful in their everyday school lives. As far as infrastructure, I really do think that we need to focus on rebuilding our schools. We need to focus on our main two high schools for, for sure. Especially Christian County and High School, Christian County and Hopkinsville High School. Those should be our main focuses. And I know the budget is something that a lot of people are concerned with, taxes. And, you know, they talked about the nickel tax and that part is over with and done with. We have to get the community to come together and help our schools succeed. Most counties and school districts and other cities, they have a lot of support from community leaders and members. And we just need a lot of more support. And we have a lot of great people in Christian County. But I, I do feel like sometimes people don't support the schools like they should. And it's a little sad, but I think with a little more research and a little more, you know, numbers, people will be a little more secure in trying to support our schools. And especially our superintendent, he's a wonderful person and he's done so much in such a little time already. And I think the last question that you had was about, I'm sorry, I have to go back to the, the chat, resources. As far as resources, I know that a lot of times with grants that we get from the state, people complain about, you know, how much the school board didn't spend or why they didn't buy that, why they didn't buy this. What a lot of people don't understand is that the grants and things that we get from the state were allotted so much per student from the previous year. But depending on what the budget is from the state, we may not get that amount. So, then we have to dig into other resources to try to figure out how we're going to pay for certain things. And the ultimate thing is, in a, in a, in the next couple of years, you know, Christian County Middle School will be paid off. And it'll be time for us to get another school. And we'll have to figure out how to do that because we have to have better high schools for our students. We have to figure out a way to do it. And, you know, I don't, I don't have all the answers by myself. But I, I promise you, as a school board member, I will try to work with the rest of the board members, work with the superintendent, work with the state to try to make sure that our kids have the necessary tools and facilities that they need to be the best that they can be in Kentucky. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, you have something to say about the question?
Okay, I think I've got them all written down here, hopefully anyway. Infrastructure, there's, there's no doubt, we've got some really, really good schools. And we've got two high schools and one middle school that needs some attention. The two high schools are our main focus, in my opinion. I, I do think that we need to do something to, to, to get a new school built. I was all in for the nickel, but the reason being was because I sat there and the first time I walked in Hopkinsville High School since I was a UPS delivery person, it was raining. And I was, it was amazing what I saw. I, I, I just, I knew right then and there that we needed to do something. We have since done the re-roofing where I had seen the building that day. But we're only allowed to do so much because of Frankfurt. You know, if a building is so many years old, you're not allowed to remodel it. You have to rebuild it. You know, our, our gross revenue is in the top five counties in the state. Our tax base is in the bottom seven counties in the state. We had the money here in Christian County, but we have the people in place fighting it to make sure that we do not have the same amount of money to give to our kids and their education as other counties do. As far as personnel, you know, everybody talks about that. The, the school board gets to hire the superintendent and the attorney, and that's it. We have no say in personnel. I'm all for supporting our teachers to the best of my ability. I'll take every concern I get from teachers. And I'll take them before Mr. Benzel or at the school board meetings. But we have no say in that. You know, everybody, you know, wants, wants to say that we've got something to do with that. We, we truly have no say whatsoever in hiring, firing, how the school systems run. I know Ms. Muffet touched on the grants. I'm all for the grants. The bad thing about a grant is twenty percent of a grant goes to somebody to oversee it. So, in other words, we have another person put in place. Because if we get a, you know, whatever the size of the grant, twenty percent of that goes to administration. Eighty percent of it goes to the students or to the teachers or whatever. Twenty percent is in administration. We've got, we've got plenty of personnel right now. And Mr. Benzel's made sure of that, that we've got people in place to do exactly what they need to be doing. Resources, again, you know, we're allotted X amount of dollars for each and everything we do. I, I'd be willing to, to say that. And, and anybody that gets, sits on the school board is going to soon find this out. That we may have a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars out of over ten million dollar budget or whatever our budget is now that we can do something with. Everything else is allocated to wherever. You know, we've spent money putting these vestibules in these older schools to make sure nobody can walk through our doors. They have to be let in. All that came out of our general budget, our general funds, but we had to do it because it was state mandated. You know, everything that we do is mandated. People keep telling us what we got to be doing, what we need to be doing. But they need to come to these meetings and understand that everything that we do is basically state mandated. And then the last question was something about the budget. I think that kind of touches, touches on what I just talked about. We do have a, a sizable carryover this time, simply because we didn't have to heat and cool the whole buildings. You know, with, with, with being out of school at the end of the year. We did still do our feeding program. So, we had to take care of that, but it's just, it's been a, it's been tough with this COVID again. But in hindsight, it has saved us money. I just hope and pray that our kids are as educated as they're supposed to be and that we don't look back five to ten years down the road and realize that, that, that some of them fell through the cracks on us. So, I, I hope that answers your question. You were really cutting out on my phone too. I don't know if it was my phone, being out here in the country or what. But I couldn't get the whole gist of everything you asked. But I think it was infrastructure, personnel, resources, and something about the budget. So, I hope I answered your questions. If, if not, if you've got another question that I need to answer, please just ask me. Thank you.
Now, that was a really good insight. I, I too live in the country. That's kind of why my connection's a little bit wonky. So, Mr. Bruce, do you have an input on this?
Certainly. Firstly, the, the infrastructure part, I made a pledge before and I'll reiterate it again. The first sixty days, my answer is I want to walk through every single building the Christian County Public School System owns. At that point, be better, better able to answer your question frankly. Because there may be buildings that I see or don't see. I'm in, in some of them now, but I'm not in all of them. And frankly, they have reasons to keep. I mean, I'm not a member of the school board. I'm not a member of the school system. So, I don't have a reason to be going in those buildings and therefore I'm not granted access to them, as it should be. But to go through every building, take a look at it, see what's there. And then I can probably better answer your question of what the infrastructure needs are long-term. I spent five years working with JKS Architects and Engineers. And I'm smart enough to just ask questions. I, I don't know how to build a building from the ground up, but I know of just enough to make me dangerous about asking questions about what's, what's appropriate, what's not, what you have to do, what you don't have to do. So, I have some understanding of construction. The next part is a budget for, and the budget support is for both classified and certified folks. A way, I'd like to figure out a way that you could reward people for doing really good jobs. I don't know what the answer to that is. That's one that would go to the staff as an idea as well. Hey, let's take a look at this. Because there are some really, really, really good teachers out here. There's some really, really, really good other folks in the buildings as well that do great jobs, do good work. But I don't think we're taking care of them the way we should. So, let's look for an opportunity to do that. And then the last, it comes in, I'm used to the idea that both candidates have talked about grants a little bit. Grant money, money, you used to think of it as all green, right? Every money's green. Well, it's not. Having worked, you know, with the Air Force long enough, money comes in different flavors. I, I call it different colors. You'll have different colors of money and you can only spend money for certain things. I, I understand that, that concept. But I also know that there's, there's ways of working with our legislators to try to work on some of those things through Frankfurt, as well as even to Washington. So, the relationship the board, board members have with elected officials at the other levels, the state government and the federal government, make an impact here locally. Because while you're just one grain of sand on the beach, those, I can't believe that we'd be the only person thinking, you know, if we were allowed to use the money to do this. You think somebody in North Carolina or, or Montana or Texas, they're, they're having some of the same thoughts. Same token, things in Christian County. Well, what about the guys in Knox County? Or Scott County, or Pendleton County, or Warren County? Same idea. The legislator makes rules and how they allocate the money. Maybe we should talk about how they put those rules on us. That's another avenue of approach to help the local systems. And that's another, that's a long-range goal as well. Think I covered all three of them.
Thank you for your answer. So, our next question. Trick County schools have been, have indicated publicly that their state will be significantly reducing district funding due to the economic recession. What are the most important district priorities that you will protect when faced with a significant budget reduction? So, whoever wants to start first can go first. Did y'all hear me?
I think that's a question everybody wants to avoid though. I'll go first with stepping out here. You know, it's, it's been rumored that we could get a twenty-eight percent cut in our budget. You know, this is going to be just like with the COVID. We're going to have to just meet it head-on. We've got to have a plan once we know exactly what those numbers are. You know, we're already at a disadvantage with the lack of a nickel. You know, I think each and every surrounding county is able to pay their teachers better than what we can. But we still have to do what we can to keep our, our staff. We still have to meet the requirements of their retirement. The legislature, you know, we've got one of our school board members, Mr. Clark is, he's, 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 he's very much in tune with, with what our, our legislators are doing. He talks to them on a regular basis. One of them maybe is actual best friend actually. So, you know, touching base with what Mr. Bruce said, you know, Mr. Clark's always trying to influence them and talk to them about what we need, making sure they understand, showing them numbers. These budget cuts are going to be hard to deal with. There's no doubt about it. My prayer is that we've saved up enough money because of the last year that we're going to be able to fight through it. And hopefully somehow or another, we can get, get back into two thousand and twenty-one. Hopefully, we can, we can make it through two thousand and twenty-one. And hopefully somehow or another, we can get, get back into two thousand and twenty-one. Hopefully we can, we can make it through two thousand and twenty, uh, the first part of twenty-one, and hopefully we can get through this, but it's until we know for sure. All we can do is talk is speculation. And I can promise you that once we know what we're dealing with, uh, the group of people that are in place as far as our staff, starting at the top, they will have a plan in place just as soon as we figure it out. You know, it may be two weeks or so, but, but, but our, with Mr. Benzel, Ms. Jessica, there's going to be a, I mean, we're going to do the best we can. And that's all we can do, you know? If there's so much money and each and every family knows this, you know, there's so much money, you can only do so many things. And that money's allocated for one specific thing and that you can't take that money. We can't take money for, for food and put it on repairing buildings. We can't take that money for diesel and, um, you know, put it in the cafeteria or whatever. Our money's got a place to go and our budget shows that to the penny. And so as soon as we know what our cuts are, we're going to sit there and we'll just sit there and listen and try to make suggestions and do the best we can. But that is what we'll have to go by and we will make it work. There's no doubt in my mind that we have the people in place to make this work regardless of what we're having to deal with. Thank you.
Mr. Penner, can I chime in for one second?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure everybody knows the context of the Trigg County budget. Um, Kentucky New Air mistakenly, unintentionally reported that, uh, twenty-eight million dollar shortfall in an error. It was two point eight million dollar shortfall. Um, so the context of the reported error, uh, for the budget shortfall was incorrect. And I, I think they printed out a, um, uh, a correction to that. So it's not going to be twenty-eight million for Trigg County. It'll be about eight percent. Our budget's approximately ninety-two million. So if you look at eight percent, you're a little under nine, nine million dollars. Also to let you all know that we had a long meeting today about that. Nothing's been officially formalized yet from KDE. So it's, it's a little early to put out numbers and figures and where to from as far as what budget to take from. But we'll have that when it's official, uh, from the Department of Education and local legislature. I just wanted to put that out for context in regards to, you referenced the Trigg County, which is a great question. But the, the new air didn't exactly get the numbers correct. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ben.
Thank you for the correction, Mr. Bizzle. And thank you for the response, Mr. Moore. I like your, I really like your optimistic approach to this. Um, so Ms. Mumford Brain, do you have a response to the question?
Can you hear me? Hold on, hold on one second. Can you all hear me now? Okay. I would like to say, being that I'm not on the school board yet, there's a lot of things that I don't necessarily know firsthand as far as, you know, the budget and, and things of that nature. Um, I do know that our teachers, um, don't make as much as they should be making. Um, and if we're allotted enough money to, to pay them more, I certainly feel like they deserve that. Um, I also feel like our money also needs to be spent towards funding to, you know, build new schools. I don't know the process, you know, fully. I have talked to people that do know, they've gave me, you know, a little insight, but I won't fully know everything. There's some things that I just won't know until I get in there myself and, and see for myself what it is that we, that we have to deal with. But like Mr. Moore said, that's just speculation. We don't know for sure if it will be cut or if we'll be, you know, a lot of the amount that we, you know, believe that we will get. That's just something that we'll just have to see when the situation and the time comes and then sit down and then go from there and figure out what we need to do. But certainly I do feel like our teachers, um, need to be compensated um, for the things that they do because they've, they've done a great job and they're continually doing a great job.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mumford Brain. Um, Mr. Bruce, your response?
Well, you're right. It's, it's speculation until you actually have hard data to make decisions off of. And I appreciate Mr. Bessel jumping in for the perspective part. I, I'd actually seen the retraction as, instead of twenty-eight, it's two point eight, which makes a huge difference. Twenty-eight million versus a two point eight million. That's, that's a big decisional difference. As you can pay, as you can note it, with some savings from last year, you know, where do we have? I'd worked for a time as a financial planner. Well, you, you want people to have the ability to have a rainy day fund. It's just like in construction, you have a sinking fund for a roof repair. Those kinds of things need to be set aside. That allows you in the long term to be able to pay teachers the, the salary you want to pay them as opposed to what you have to pay them. Uh, it's a different story, you know, in that you, you can then spend the money to improve things, things, everything, not just one, but improve, prove them to the point where the old story is, you know, the, uh, a rising tide raises all boats. And that's the idea here. Be optimistic to look out and be forward thinking so that knowing that you're going to have to do something. Well, in this case, I think you can plan on the fact that there's going to be some kind of cut, but how big is it? And until you know how big it is, it's all speculation. Well, what if it's five percent? Or what if it's ten percent? Or what if it's twenty percent? What if it's fifty percent? Well, at some point you just stop the speculation. Let's get some data that says, hey, it's going to be this percentage. Start looking now where, where you have, what do you have to scale back on, cut out, stop? Those are all tough decisions that, that will come. But trying to make not, don't make the decision before you have to in this case. Because you don't know what, you don't know how big it is yet. You don't know what the impact is yet. Just wait for the impact and then we'll make decisions.
Thank you all so much for your responses.
Um, okay. Hello. Uh, my name is Amara Christian Mary. Um, for our last segment of tonight's discussion, we'll transition to an open ended dialogue. Um, the students' voice teamwork has always been grounded in equity and justice. We've advocated, um, for the inclusion of student voices in education policy research and advocacy. Um, so we wanted to conclude our discussion with a couple of targeted questions. Um, if there are any brief concluding remarks you would like to make, you can include those here. Um, we will give each person one to two minutes to respond, starting with Mr. Moore. Um, how do you incorporate, um, equity and justice in your work on the school board? You'll have around one minute to respond.
You know, that's, that's, that's a tough question in today's society. I can promise you that. You know, we deal with, uh, our school district is different than basically every school district in Kentucky, except for one, and that being Jefferson County. Okay? I, I don't know how we can positively address it. Uh, I can tell you this. There was a gentleman that graduated a year ahead of me in nineteen seventy-nine. His name is Kenneth Hart. He was a great basketball player, went on to become a, he's, he's just a model citizen. He lives in Texas. There was a, a post on Facebook the other day and, and I commented on it and, and then he commented on it. And, um, you know, I, I, he and I ended up talking a little bit afterwards. You know, Christian County's different than most places. We've lived with this forever. You know, we have to continue to try to do the best job that we can to make sure that there's equality for everybody. Just as I shared with Mr. Bell, there's probably not been a better time to close the achievement gap than we've got right now. We've basically got the best opportunity to have a private public school system because of the people that are doing virtual academy. You know, we have to make sure that we bring everybody along. But we have to make sure that the treatment of each and every individual is fair also. And I can promise you that we do the best job we can, once it gets before us. Now, there's some issues that we can't handle, that we can't discuss as a school board member. But I can promise you that we do the best job we possibly can. And try to do everything possible to make sure that there is racial equality straight across the board. And I, I have to tell you, I, I grew up in Crofton, Kentucky. And, and you know, the guys that I went and picked up every morning to come to my farm, they didn't look like me. But they were my best friends. And I'm not saying that anything's changed. I'm just saying, as Mr. Hart and I talked about, we've dealt with this for forty something years now to the best of our ability. And I will continue to do that to the best of my ability for the next four years if I'm reelected. Because I have no, I mean, that, that, that's just, those are my, some of my best friends don't look like I do. And they're thankful they don't look like me either. I promise you that. Short and fat's not a very good look. So, but I, I, I'm all in on whatever we have to do to make this work as a community and as a country. Because we're sort of divided now. It's, 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 it's unbelievable in my opinion. But I'm willing to do anything possible. But that's a great question, but it's a tough one to answer. Okay? Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Um, I have a question for Ms. Brain. Um, what changes, if any, do you believe should be made at the district level in order to create a more positive school climate?
I believe, you know, I will be one hundred percent honest. Before this year, I have not paid much attention to what was going on, um, at the central office level. Um, I just kind of sent my kids to school, hope they did good, you know, stayed in contact with the teachers and, and that was my job. I just wanted my kids to succeed and I just wanted to be a good mom. Um, but now that I'm running, I have to look at things, you know, a lot differently. And I think at a district level, you know, I've just seen so many people talking about, um, financial responsibility and being held accountable. And I think that's something that any employee would want from employer. That's something that any, um, child would want from a teacher. But I really would like to say that Mr. Benzel, I will say that he has a great rapport with teachers, parents and students. I don't feel like we will have an issue, um, with him being upfront, with him letting the community know what's going on. But as a parent and as a community member, it is my responsibility to make sure that I know what's going on. Because if I don't stay informed, I can't, you know, be upset when things aren't going the way I feel like they need to be. I need to be involved and I need to be at the meetings like, like Mr. Moore said. You know, they've invited people to school board meetings and nobody shows up. You know, we can't be out here complaining about things if we're not going to voice our opinion and be in the room to hear what's going on. They invite you in for a reason. They want people to be there to hear what's going on. It's not like they're trying to hide things from people. But like I said, as a mom, it was just something that just was not on my agenda. You know, life happens, you know, bills need to be paid. But our kids' education is something that we need to, you know, take to heart. It's something that we need to be very strong and mindful about. I feel like the people that are in those positions, I'd be put in those positions for a reason. And I trust that the things that they're doing will be what's right. It may not be what I think they should do, but if we've elected these people to these positions, it, that is, that they, they go with what the people who elected them have, have gave them the ability to do. So I just feel like, you know, we just need to put our faith in what they're doing and, and just believe and know that our superintendent and the board members will do and have been doing the best that they can do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, um, my last question is for Mr. Bruce. Um, how will you support and work with students of color, students with disabilities, low income and LGBT and Q students as well as other marginalized, um, folks and their families?
There's a couple of parts to this. One is involve parents, and Ms. Burn just talked about that a lot. Involve parents are critically important to the education of every one of those children in, in any of those groups that you name. If the education, I'll go back to something I said earlier, education gives you options. So the more educated we can make the society, the more options everyone in the society has. And I, this is, I crewed, when I was crewing on an airplane, I lived with, with four guys all the time. We lived for a week at a time in close quarters. Uh, one guy was African American from rural Georgia. One guy's African American from the inner city of Kansas City. One guy was born in Quito, Ecuador, grew up in South Los Angeles. Okay? And then, uh, another guy from Northern Arizona and me, a, a farm boy from central Kentucky. The five of us lived together. It, it, the most important part was can you do your job in the airplane? That was the most important part. Cause that means you're not trying to kill me. And I was very appreciative of that idea. The flip side of it is, but you also learn a lot about, when you interact with other people. I, I don't know if you've ever been a part of a sports team, but sports teams tend not have a homogenous makeup. Especially ones that have schools like ours where, where there's lots of different, uh, ethnicities in every school. But those sports teams, you form friendships with those folks based on something you've gone through together, going to practice every day. Believe me, we, you go through July and August and practicing football. That's hot weather. And so it's the pain, if you will, that kind of bonds you together. Same thing with military experience. You, you, you bond together with folks because of that. Mr. Moore earlier talked about some friends he formed in high school that he still talks to today. Those are, they're just bonds. Well, you're forming those now. And some of the folks, these are your classmates. They're going to be with you this year and next year and maybe a couple more years. Some of them will drift away. Some of them move away. Some of them move back. Some of them stay here. But that, no matter where they go, the ability to communicate now is easy. So you can actually stay in touch with people that are friends now. We have, you know, because I've moved around, I have friends all over the country that we still take, that my wife and I stay in contact with regularly. Uh, it, it's, it's great. It's a great experience. So my, back to your question, it's through education and exposure, experience. You'll find that all these people, when you cut them, they all bleed red blood. Now, if you cut somebody, they breathe, bleed some other color like green or purple or something. Maybe you need to think about something else with them, but, but we're, we're all about ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of our DNA makeup is the same. Only a little bit of difference that gives you characteristics, you know, bigger ears or a big nose. So those are small when you compare it to what the humans are really like. We're more, we're more, much more alike than we are different. And most people want to be successful. They want to go do something. They don't want, they don't want to be failures in life. There's a common goal. Well, education gives you options. And I'm just going to go back to the mantra of mine. Education gives you options in life. The more educated you are, the better our society is and the more options you have. I, I'll just stay with that one.
Alrighty. So thank you all. Thank you to all of our candidates for your insight and perspective on ways to improve our schools in the midst of such a profound moment in history. A special thank you to our students, Ms. Cushingberry, Ms. Buckner and Ms. Wilford for moderating today's conversation.
Thank you.
And thank you to all of our incredible teachers, students, staff, administrators, parents and community members who have joined us today to be a part of this town hall. We're hopeful that tonight stood as a moment and a testament that local elections are just as important as national ones and often less hectic. This is a pivotal year for our country, our state and our district. Don't sit it out. We encourage everyone to go vote and to vote early.
This is a pivotal year for our country, our state, and our district. Don't sit it out. We encourage everyone to go vote and to vote early. Use your voice in this election, but also empowers others to do the same. Thank you so much for your time and we hope that you all have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for having me.
Yes.